All right, it is Tuesday, February 7th at 4:00 PM. It's a meeting with the Christian Board of Trustees. Is there motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
Favor.
I.
I. Carrie, please rise to the floor, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Republicans, one nation, under one individual liberty and justice for all.
All right. We do not have meeting minutes. Can we be approved? We do not have meeting mail. Our appointments are on the budget review. We've got a number of department heads coming in to talk about their budgets. We'll take them one by one. Mr. Kelly, I don't know if you've had a chance to preliminarily meet with the folks, but number one up is Chad Leclair from Parks and Rec.
Good evening or afternoon. Yes, I did meet with Jamie last week. We went over a few things and, I mean, the main thing as far as the Park and Rec is the Park Department looking for an increase of $1,300 to my contracted services, basically covering increases to Mosquito Squad and True Green and just, you know, the different companies that we use to work at the park and just their increases in prices to try to cover that. So that's really it for Park and Rec that we're looking for as far as increases.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Leclair and I have also met because of the board. A while ago told me to investigate a youth work program similar to the senior work-off program, and we've discussed it. We moved the $13,000 from the summer worker in the town buildings and have added an article for youth work program for funding. Chad and I have talked about how the design would go, and we are looking to fund it with $20,000 in free cash, similar to the way we funded the senior work-off program for the first year.
And we look at it, because it's free cash, it's not embedded in the budget. We just, every year we review it, right? If it's, it works, we'd ask for that appropriation. If it doesn't, then we wouldn't do the program.
And it's $7,000 more than we've done in the past as far as town funds, but it's from a different source. And it would be used for both the parks and for around these buildings. It would be an effective WPA crew.
Right. And that's something I think, you know, like, we've got a lot of pocket parks, I guess, if you will, you know, like the River View Riverside, you know, down by the river, you know, Lake Street, and there's some areas in town that the DPW can't necessarily get to of all. So I think, you know, if we're, as long as we're coordinating with the DPW, I think it'd be great, you know, if we can get, you know, local kids, taxpayers, you know, children of taxpayers, like, that's a great one.
Lately, the town buildings crew has been doing like the River Park and some of the other parks where DPW has been doing Light Street.
It's even up to you guys to decide how to do that.
Jim, that doesn't impact Mr. Leclair's budgets. I mean, overall, between Recs being down and Park being up, it's a difference of $247 for the Parks and Recreation. It's not a, it's not a, any kind of significant change in his overall budget. You know, working in collaboration with everybody, trying to get that going again and making sure everything's maintained properly and the things that need to get done, it's a different story, but it's not.
I think the only way that it might impact us would be if we can utilize some of that to, for like our summer youth program that's at the park. I know they, they've had a lot more kids, especially last year, so like post-COVID, but they still try to stay within their salary budgets, and so they don't have as many workers, which obviously impacts probably how many kids each worker has to handle. So it might help a little bit there. And then, again, if we're doing some work at some of the places, we're starting to cut the grass at the schools. So if we continue with that, maybe we can hire a few people to work around the park and do some work there that alleviates, you know, Mike Ashley and all the park workers do. So it may impact us a little bit as far as future budgets if we continue with it.
Sure. Just didn't want anybody at home watching in TV land to think that $20,000 went to Parks and Recreation. We're talking their budget specifically is $247 change. That's it.
And it's, so we have some coordination because, as you know, Mr. Leclair is also the chairman of the CPC committee. So we, you know, if there is a need to, for a maintenance on any of these parks, then he'd know upfront and we could design it appropriately, the coordination, just like as he said, his staff is now doing the playing fields at the school.
Chad, big picture, do you have any, you know, Mr. Kelly's talked about it, and I've got an interest in it, like pickleball?
Yeah, we discussed that too. One of my goals would be to try to, I need to speak with, obviously, different individuals as far as how much land we have behind the, like, behind Champions Field, how close it is to the homes, because I'd like to put maybe like three basketball courts back there, and then maybe we could change the existing basketball court to a pickleball court. So reutilize that, and so we've discussed, I've even discussed it, calling the Shane Martin basketball courts as well in honor of Shane. He loved basketball. I've talked to a few people about that, even the Shane Martin Foundation, so they were on board with that too. So getting coordinated, getting money and funding for it and that sort of thing. But yeah, that would be the way to reutilize the basketball court.
Right. Again, I know Pope Park is like kind of the heartbeat, and that's where all the attraction is, but, you know, if there are other sites around town that would be conducive to pickleball and, you know, alleviate some of the congestion there, and, you know, that might be a good...
I know, we talked about it with the school during the CPC about, yeah, because they're doing the tennis courts over and the basketball court, and we said, what about maybe a pickleball court going in the tennis court area? So, I mean, there might be that opportunity, but it would be nice to have more than one.
Yeah, for sure.
It's becoming pretty popular, so.
You know, again, like, we've got top of the golf course, even the old Quaker Wells property, you know, like, but I think, you know, there may be some areas in town that, I'd be open to exploring with you guys. All right, thank you. Any issues, gentlemen? We're good?
All right, thanks. Motion to approve preliminary, all preliminary, obviously.
Second.
Favor.
I.
Thanks, Chad.
Thanks, Chad.
Next up is the library.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a couple of library trustees with me here today as well, so if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
We all know you, but if you want to introduce yourself.
Oh, sure. I'm Dina St. Pierre, library director, eighth year this year, woo-hoo, who would have thunk it? You have the library's budget. We have two requests. Request A is level funded. Request B features the promotion of an existing part-time position to a full-time position in the children's room. This is our second year formally requesting the funding for this full-time position, but it's been something we've addressed as a need since 2019. Both budgets feature the removal of the custodian position from the library's budget for the town administrator's reorganization plan, and both budgets need our municipal appropriation requirement for FY24, which I'll talk more about in a minute. The bottom line is the library needs this full-time children's room assistant position. I, as your department head for the library, am speaking honestly with you, saying I need this position at the library. As you can see in request B, having the position increases the library's budget by $6,488.92 or 2.25% overall. You get three things right off the bat for $6,500. You get a third full-time employee in a department that's open to the public 45 hours per week. As you might be able to imagine, scheduling can be complicated when the majority of my staff work between eight and 19 hours. We need two people in the building during those 45 hours for safety reasons, obviously. So a third time employee will provide some flexibility and alleviate some stress on me. A dedicated position in the children's room ultimately means better service for residents and more programs for families. I don't care so much in person, but I occasionally read on social media that people are disappointed, that we don't offer more programs for families, working families in the evening or on the weekends. We would love to offer programs in the evenings and on the weekends for families. We can't because we don't have the staffing levels. So that's not a choice on this children's librarian's part, because I am a former children's librarian. And third of all, this $6,500 gives your department head a chance to focus on the administrative matters that I was hired by the library's board of trustees to focus on. Gives me time to work on grants. Gives me time to really make sure that the library's budget is being spent in a way that gives residents the most bang for their buck. So those are the three things you get for $6,500. Like I said, the municipal appropriation requirement for FY24 is met by both budgets, so if you can't support request B, you can't support an extra $6,500. Then request A does get us over the municipal appropriation requirement. So you see in request A that there's a larger increase in operating because in order for us to stay over the MAR, we had to put the missing $12,000 from the custodian's position into operating. And then in request B, that gets moved out of operating and gets put into the children's room assistant position being full-time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Dina?
Yes.
We don't have that budget. You have, you're talking about a request A.
The town administrator request was for the full-time.
Oh, you didn't put in the request A. Oh, I didn't realize that. Okay, well, you don't even have a request A.
Just so, because you're talking request A, and I'm looking, and I can see Mr. Hinckley's looking, and he's looking for more pieces of paper, and I'm like...
My apologies, I thought you, I thought was submitted. Thank you for letting me know that you don't have that. You only have B. Great.
So we have B.
Would have been great to know that before I started dealing that all out to you.
We have B.
The town administrators advocating for the full-time position.
Thank you. Well, that's great news. Thank you very much. Okay, so scrap what I said about A. My goodness. There is no A, it's only this request that you have in front of you, that's it. Great, okay. Thank you for pointing that out. I'll just move on to the next part. I just want to point out that the library has been really lucky so far since relocating in that capital expenses and other big-ticket items have been covered by gift accounts, state aid, the friends of the library. So when we've needed new furniture, new computers, printers, other equipment, when we've had electrical issues, like big electrical issues, or water in our basement that required capital expenses, we've been able to address these with existing funds, so we haven't had to go to town meeting to ask for extra money or ask you all for any kind of extra support. The one thing we can't get with these funds that we're lucky enough to have is staff, and that's where I really need your help. I need you to help me, help the library meet its full potential and continue to meet and exceed the needs of our dedicated patronage now and in the future. On a final note, library usage is on the rise. I handed out an infographic to you detailing what the community saved by using the library in 2022. It's just over $1.2 million. This figure is based on circulation and program attendance. We expect our numbers to continue to increase this year in 2023, especially due to the state of the economy. People tend to turn to the public library more when times are financially tough, which they are. We've already issued over 50 new library cards since January 2nd. People are actively seeking out and using their library to borrow physical or electronic material, to attend programs, just to name a couple of things. As you know, we went fine-free in December, so we're no longer charging overdue fees, and that news has been received very positively by the community. We have a full calendar of programs in February, and we're making plans for spring and summer now, which includes our very popular summer concert series. And I just wanted to note that all of our programs are completely free to the public. So when we say that they're free, we mean that they're free. We're using friends' money to pay for those programs, state aid, gift funds, it's not coming from our appropriated budget when we're paying for programs. So that said, as always, we invite everyone to come by the library, 232 Middle Road, find us on social media by looking for Christian Public Library, or checking out the website, acupl.org, and then hopefully visiting us soon, including the people sitting up front there. We'd love to see you.
Do you remember, we talked about it before, I'd love to host a selectmen's meeting there.
Great.
Sometime soon.
Great. Let us know when.
We'll do that.
We'll leave Tuesdays at 4:00 open.
All right, sounds good.
You just let us know.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you do.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry that I didn't know about that.
All right, so gentlemen, do we want to, anything that has, you know, like, an increase to it, hold that off? Or do we just want to go one by one, and if we see fit, just move it up the chain? I don't see any downside.
I think the, I think the, what's problematic about the budget season, as we start kicking it off, the other ones are level funded, so it's not so bad, but I think when we start digesting certain requests that increase the budget versus the message that was given, at least that's what I'm told, on the message that was given to Pam, it's, and I think we look at, Mr. Kelly and I had a conversation, I'll just talk Old Colony for a minute, that their budget were to level funded, chapter 70 is an increase of roughly $430,000, is that correct?
$440,000, yeah.
$440,000. We know it is roughly 825,000 from the levy increase and new growth to balance a budget. That's 50% of that. I don't know, forgetting our school department and fixed costs and the things of the like, I don't know how we're gonna accomplish that goal. I mean, if you're looking at the school department, and if you see Old Colony coming in at 4, even if they came in with a 400, all the money's gone. It's small of an increase, this 6,500 bucks may be, it just, I, the moral of the story is it's getting really complicated, looking at those big numbers coming in at us and hitting us in the face and saying, where is this money actually gonna come from? The 6,500 bucks, I'm not talking about the library budget, so please don't think that I'm doing this, you just happen to be there on, based on what the chairman said. It just opens up the scope of the discussion of what are we gonna do? Because, you know, I did see the Old Colony budget, and yes, it's minus, it's a level-funded state aid, but that ain't gonna help us that much from the cushion assessment, and whatever the school department's gonna do, right? We know what that increases, the request usually is, so I don't know where we're gonna get money from to cover all of this. You can't, you know, we were hit in the tax classification hearing, we were hit with, oh my God, we gotta go to 150 from the 125 shift, they put more of a burden, so something's gone on there that I still haven't resolved yet, and figured out that big, oh my God, why are we going up 25% in one year? We had concerns about taxpayers and taxes, and if we continue or we start to use, which is not allowed by the DOR, free cash to balance budgets, you're spending that much more, it's being compounded that much more, and then we go into the tax base again and whacking the snot out of taxpayers. If we all lived within our means all of the years that we did use free cash in the past, instead of doing that and just live with what you had available for budgeting, we probably wouldn't be at the point that we are today. So I'm just, I'm very concerned about spending more than what you actually have in revenue to spend for budgetary purposes, and I think that's the biggest story to have. We don't have that no more from Mr. Kelly or anything, so we're kind of working from the rearview mirror right now, saying, how are we gonna get here when we don't know what here is? What's the, what's the main objective? If I'm sitting here just approving budgets, yeah, it's nice to give everybody what they want, but in reality, that's not gonna happen. And what's really sad is I can't, in my opinion, I can't sit here as a selectman and tell other departments, you all need to cut your budgets by 10 or 15%, and I'm gonna steal from public safety and everything else to subsidize somebody else's budget that's asking for an unreasonably large expense, i.e., I'm gonna say it, Old Colony's budget is up $430,000.
I agree with Mr. Gaspar. We, that's why I asked that all these early presentations be considered as preliminary, because number one, you do not have the state figures, they will not be out until after March 1. Number two, you do not have the school budget, which is pretty much half of the budget. Number three, you have increases like Mr. Gaspar talked about with Old Colony, which we still haven't talked since we got those preliminary figures from them with Old Colony, but with an increase of 18, I believe it's students, and 440...
$1,000.
That, to me, rounds, rounded figures, it's about $24,500 per student, when supposedly the average cost is 16,000 something. So there's $8,000 plus that is in an issue there that has to be clarified, and I think should be clarified by Old Colony to the board. This is so that the board can talk to the department heads. You asked to have them come in. This is probably one of, notwithstanding a reorg, it's either one of one or one of two that I would like to recommend, and there are other cuts in the town budget that could support it. Town side, we still don't know what's coming from the other side.
I totally get it. I made sure it was clear to Dina, I see one of the trustees standing up, maybe wants to talk on the issue, and I'm welcome that conversation, but this is nothing to do with the library's request. End of story. I believe last year, this board sat here and discussed it, and because of the additional halftime staff at Council on Aging, we couldn't manage that within our finances, and we said maybe next year. Here we are today, discussing this with Dina and the library board of trustees, and I'll endorse this budget 100%. I just brought up a bigger picture for everybody at TV land and all our departments to understand what's happening within the finances and the construct of the budget.
So...
Bigger picture.
I think from a process standpoint, you know, we approved parks, that was 200 and something.
47 bucks.
I think just from a process standpoint, anything that has a $1,000 increase or below, I think we can move through the process tonight. If anything else above that, let's just hold it, and then we can have a bigger discussion, right? Again, it's not like, we're not trying to pick winners or losers. I do think from a budget standpoint, we're in the, you know, like, this is the first inning, you know, I'm hoping that the state on education, I mean, the voters passed the millionaire's tax, that's gonna bring in over a billion dollars a year for education and infrastructure. So I gotta, I'm hedging my bets that you're gonna see an increase in chapter 70. That's what that money's there for, right? So I'm hoping that that will alleviate some of the pressures that municipalities are seeing, and we'll see some of that, but, you know, it's still very early in the process, right? So.
Sure.
Is that, gentlemen, is that acceptable from a process standpoint? Like, so for this one, we'll just hold off, and then we'll just continue to go through the budget process?
Yeah, the preliminary approvals, I just wanted to get that off my chest, so everybody that understands, and we do have departments that are kind of a little bit confused on what's going on, and the last thing I'm gonna do is sit here and make cuts to departments that haven't asked for larger increases in the past, and they're sacrificing their budget, and then that money's gonna come over here, and Paul's giving it to Peter, and Peter's running off with it, and that, that system doesn't work. That system's broken, we need to figure it out, we need to spend what we have, and that's all we can spend. And we have contractual obligations, fixed cost obligations, and that whittles down at 825, down tremendously. I would say pretty minuscule to what's left for budgetary reasons. So where do we go from here? I don't know. I've been doing this for a while, and we've been all debating and arguing and cutting and all that stuff for a long time, and I can tell you right now, looking at these budgets, I've been doing that for a long time. Again, there's not a lot of fat in these budgets, I can tell you that, because we've gone through this practice year in, year out, year end, year out. There's not a lot there. And as far as the library's request goes, I think it warrants the $6,500 increase, but that's my opinion on that. So I'll leave it at that, and I agree with Mr. Mona, we just kind of do preliminary approvals, like we did last meeting, and say, okay, and then when we get down the road and we see where the figures are coming in, we gotta start squeezing and cutting, and that, all gonna come back to the board of selectmen. Because I can't have somebody cutting a budget that doesn't know enough about the town to say, we're stealing $100,000 from, you know, just wherever, X, Y, and Z's budget, and this board might go, no you're not. So that's...
We'll just point out though, again, like, you'll need to look at request A if you don't approve request B, because we're gonna be down $12,000, and we won't meet our municipal appropriation requirement if we're down $12,000.
There's the other part of the library's equation.
And like I've mentioned to Mr. Kelly, no offense to him, I don't want to go routinely to Boston with him or anyone else to defend our library. I just do not want to do that. I don't think you want the town to be in a position to lose certification. Thank you. So, yeah, that's...
Jen?
No, that's okay. I was just gonna say the same thing, just to remind you that the, in order to meet the MAR, I mean, we're basically gonna have to take that $12,000 and just put it somewhere in, in operating, just because we have to meet that. And it seems kind of silly, if we can use it for what we need, why, we don't need extra money in equipment, we don't need extra money in building and grounds, we don't need, we don't need it. We need the full-time staff member. That's what we need. And really, using that $12,000, we're only asking for the $6,500. So we're using what we can. Unfortunately, we don't have at the library, we don't have anywhere else to trim, to cut, to, we, I mean, we've, we're down people at the library, and to be honest, Dina can't do that much more. She can't.
Got it. Understood.
And I think with the, you know, with the economy, the way that it is, and the people looking to, I mean, financially, people can't do a whole lot in the town, and it's only gonna get worse. And where are they gonna go? The library. It's something to do, it's someplace to go, and it's free. So I just, I just wanted to, you know, remind you of that.
Thank you. 100%. Thank you. It's just, again, we're just going through this process tonight, so we'll just, let's just put this off, put the library off till we get through these other proposals. Next up is Council on Aging.
Mine's easy after that. I have presented you with a level-funded budget, which is actually a decrease under Mr. Kelly's reorganization plan for the custodians. That salary would come out of my, that line item, so my budget does have a decrease overall. One thing I just want to put on your radar, we discussed it at finance committee, I have no capital request for this year. Sooner rather than later, though, we're gonna need to look at my heating system. When we replaced the air conditioning system two years ago, it was recommended that we look at the heating system. We're hobbling along at this point, but within the couple of years, and the quote for that two years ago is around 40,000, I can't imagine it's gonna go down.
So what are you, what are you using there now? Is it like a force?
It's gas. I have furnaces in the attic. They were, they weren't replaced when the building was redone in 1999.
Now, I mean, we're using split units, we've got split units at the library, there's all these incentives for, you know, heat pumps and all this stuff.
Right, and Massey has rebates, and it's not something that we have to look at this year, I just want it on your radar, so when I come to you in two or three years, it's not like you never heard of it.
You may get it sooner than later, because if there's grants out there, because we have a great community, so we can take advantage of, we should be doing that, and so I'm glad you flagged it, and it should be, you know, we're gonna talk about that at some point.
Other than that, the building has been completely renovated, I have no other capital request ongoing out there.
Talk to us about gutters.
Yes, my gutters do need to be replaced, that's low-cost, I think with, with the people working in the town, and especially in your reorganization plan for custodians, that's something that we could do in-house.
And that'll come as a separate one-time spending article, you know, free cash.
And I don't think it's something, again, that we need to look at right now, especially with the crunch, but...
But again, we'll go back to, from a budget, like, money isn't necessarily the issue, it's the money that we have available to us for operating costs. There are other... There are other buckets of money to take care of those things. So I would rather, we know we're going to have to deal with it. I'd rather not put it off, right? Because the money is there for those types of things, the one-time expenditures. It's not necessarily there for the day-to-day.
Right, right. But I just think that heating, just because with my clientele, the heat goes from October to partly April, you know what I mean, a little bit part of those buildings?
And it'd be in a shelter. That adds another element of it. So I think that's something that maybe this board should be discussing this year. And not for a long in it. I mean, you can't, you can't, you can't compromise your heating system or your air conditioning system.
No, your air conditioning system's fine. That's been completely replaced.
Yeah, that's fine. But your heating system's not. Right.
Okay. All right, well, very good. Saying that there's no increase to this budget, is there a motion to approve?
Some preliminary approval.
Second, we just, when we get to town buildings, we'll deal with the janitorial stuff that he's been...
All those in favor?
Shuffling the deck on.
All right. At the request of Mr. Kelly, he's asked that we hold off on the town accountant and treasure collectors tabledos.
I would like those tabled, Mr. Chairman, because of the consultant contracts that we're using right now. I want to go into some detail with the board and update you.
Okay.
Motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Board of assessors. See, just around here, the Board of Assessors. Good evening. Costco.
Hello.
Why?
So, just to confirm that, the budget you all have in front of you is Request A, level-funded, for the Board of Assessors. The total is a hundred and ninety thousand five seventy-four?
No.
Yes?
No.
Hundred and eighty-two, six-two-nine.
Oh, yeah, because of the NearMap. I apologize, that is correct. So basically, everything is level-funded, except for the contractual obligation of the Ask Me Admin position, that is the step and anniversary raise. The camera licensing fee, again, that goes up annually, went up two-point-nine percent. And everything else is level-funded. If I may ask a question to Mr. Kelly, if you don't mind?
Of course, yeah.
I'm not sure what is being used, or if you have a projected number already for new growth for FY twenty-four. I was looking through my information that I emailed, usually it goes along with the solo revenue. And I didn't see a projected number. Can you tell me what you're using, because I can take a look at it?
Two-fifty.
Oh, okay. I can handle that. Thank you. Appreciate that. We, I did have another, I probably removed from the budget you're seeing, but for new technology called NearMap, but it's going to be added to the technology budget. It's an annual subscription for the aerial topography and footprints of the parcels in town. It's really, it's a beautiful software.
And it can be, it can be used by other departments, which you have already done.
I have, and as the admin, I can take up to a hundred people that can participate. So feel free to email me as town officials if you want access to it, and I can invite you in to process it.
My thirty-day expired...
It was only thirty days?
Yeah, you sent me an invite...
Oh, I sent you, and you didn't process it in thirty?
But I didn't respond to it.
That's fine.
Getting wrapped up in many other things that's going on.
So I'll do that.
And then I went back to use it, and I started reading, and I was like, oh, that's a bummer. So it's got a thirty-day expiration. I was like, thirty-three, thirty-four. I was like, I'll just have to talk to Kelly and see if we can get a little renewal on this one. Kelly, can you tell me what CAMER is a guy for?
It's Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal. That's an acronym.
Oh, that's...
So that's the Patriot Property Software. That's CAMER.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, well, look, not all increases are created equal, right? And so while technically this is a two-thousand-dollar-ish increase in the budget, it's not any type of program expansion. It's not, it's just basically, it's license and fixed cost.
It's contractual, really. I mean, it's peanuts, it's three-hundred bucks on the license fee, and the rest of it's contractual, you have no choice. Make a motion to approve.
May I also ask another question, or segue with, as they talk about some town meeting articles? The Board of Assessors, I'm going to be presenting to them in February to possibly change the parameters for the personal senior exemptions. They're really not up to par with the current income and assets that they, that are realistic for a person to live in today's age. And I know the federal government did bump up a lot of social security benefits that will probably have a lot of people fall off that disqualified in prior years. Once I have the details presented, I'd like to have the Board of Assessors put an article in for the annual town meeting, just the thought that I want to...
Didn't we do that a few years back, Kelly? We raised something about, oh, man, I forget what it was.
It was a COLA adjustment for the seventeen-D.
Yeah, but we went like dollar-wise. I think it was when Noble was here. We did something like forty-eight thousand to fifty-two or fifty-four thousand. What was that all about? Do you remember?
I believe it might have been for the forty-one-A deferral that's governed for the betterments, the Chapter eighty, Section thirteen-B.
Maybe it was, maybe it was betterment.
I believe it was betterments because of trying to have them fit in the guidelines of where they could get them deferred, like lowering the age and upping the asset.
Yeah, it was something about dollars earned or whatever. I'll look it up and figure out what that was. But it was something like that that we already did. We upped the ante. It was like, the threshold was like forty-seven, forty-eight. We went to like fifty-three, fifty-five.
Not sure.
Whatever it is. But that's similar to what you're talking about, right?
Exactly. But most of, the bulk of the applicants are for the, under the clause seventeen-D and forty-one-C, which, right now, it's like poverty level. It will actually be very beneficial to the seniors in town to actually try to manage with the income that they're getting and to keep their homes.
Got it. Thank you.
Technology.
Chief, could you knock on the door?
Technology, that's a doozy. Here goes five hours.
So I know that there was a lot of organization and movement with technology, so I'm not sure if everyone had a chance to look at the memo.
Just the, the whole concept is that we have technology scattered among multiple budgets across the town. And we do have a technology budget. So if we move it all under the technology budget, we not only see what we have, we, especially with the Munis system and some of the other systems we're using, we do not have to buy individual components at the component price. We can buy or license the whole thing under one. And it's very minor savings, but there are some minor savings. And it shows the town what they're actually spending on technology.
A huge increase.
Yeah, so...
Sixty-one thousand...
So on that memo, though...
Seventy-five.
On the fourth page, I believe, of expenses, so on the actual reorganization, including the NearMap software for assessors, it's forty-four thousand four hundred dollars.
Is that, is that what's been shuffled? Because I noticed Mr. Kelly shuffled the deck in a lot of different budgets, not only to technology, but with janitorial services that go back to town buildings that we'll be discussing in the near future?
Yes. So like Code Red was being paid under selectmen, so that's ninety-two-hundred. That looks like an increase to technology, but in actuality, it's just moving it from the selectman line over to technology. You know, I can run through the list. So NearMap for assessors, which is the seventy-nine forty-five. Planning was a thousand for Adobe, even though that was multiple departments who used that. And then this is also pre-planning for, once the fiber's in place, we're able to cut down on a lot of internet services and telephone for multiple departments. So EMA, FIRE, which is actually already in place, because we connected them into fiber on Station One. So we're able to move five thousand dollars from FIRE over to technology to help pay for, when we actually tie in with fiber, for that internet cost. So that's a lot of, some of the reorganization. Which we also, I'm not sure, I've been talking to Jamie about it, but we're technically going to be an ISP, like an internet service provider. So where golf is an enterprise, and cable is also technically an enterprise. If the town wanted to do something, we could charge them, you know, a percentage of what they're paying currently for internet and phone, because the town is now providing that to those departments. If we wanted to make up some costs, which might help.
So you're seeing what, the reshuffling of the deck? Because I reshuffled the deck along with my previous year's budget. And your budget's up sixty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-five, according to your bottom line. You're seeing forty-four thousand, what was the number?
Forty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-eight.
Four hundred and twenty-eight? Was reshuffled from other budgets?
Yes.
And that's the past costs, correct?
Yep, so, you know, Highway, they were paying, they're paying it out of their gas line, but they were paying Comcast, I think it was eighty dollars a month for internet, over to the barn. So that eight hundred dollars, I would propose, pull the eight hundred dollars out of Highway to put into the IT, because IT is now paying for the brunt of that internet that's getting passed down to the barn for free. So it's just kind of moving it from here to give, to help buffer, I guess, the IT.
To the increase?
Yeah.
Again, we're stealing from Peter to pay Paul. We're all one municipality. And I get what we're doing, and it's great that we should be, all of that should be saving the town money, not just reallocating dollars from one person to another.
Yeah, which, in the long run, it is saving money. It's...
I got you. I understand the enterprise funds are separate from taxation, so that's a different conversation for the board to consider. Well, we could do that. We could backcharge, if that's the word we want to use. We used to use it before. But we start backcharging for whatever reason, and we could backcharge certain costs to enterprise funds and reimburse it, as long as we're saving enterprise money. Then there's a percentage of that that we could capture and still provide a small savings to enterprise. I think that makes sense? But just to be taking money from DPW and saying, I'm taking your eighty bucks a month, and I'm putting it in this budget over here. What's the cost savings for doing all the fiber? How much do we save versus what it costs? And then we divert, divvy that up, that pie up? That might work?
So, let me ask you this. I mean, what's, what's the bottom line to the town? Because you're just, you're just grabbing all the money that's being spent on tech townwide, putting it in one account, which is, which we should, right? For transparency and for ease of understanding where the heck is everything. So what's the bottom line increase to the town?
It would be the fifteen thousand, essentially, the difference between the sixty-one and the forty-four.
Got it, okay.
And some of it is the increase, because the forty-four was last year's.
Is current FY twenty-three, so the increase to twenty-four would be the, considering the moving from here to central...
And there's some licensing fees that are going up year to year.
And there's also, so a big percent, a big percent...
NearMap, NearMap was, that was done through the Board of Assessors. That was software and an article for them to purchase that software. I don't think we were ever told that it was a re-incurring cost of seventy-six hundred dollars every year. That's a pretty big chunk of change.
Yeah, and I mean, maybe we could look into, do the maps need to be updated yearly? Could it be, you know, every other year thing? I don't, I just...
That contract is...
I'm not sure, yeah. I'm not sure how that works.
We contracted, you contracted for that last year, and it's an annual cost.
That's a, that's a, that's a doozy.
Another thing that we wouldn't have to go with, but it's on there as the top, would be adding the Content Manager to Munis, which is that first expense line for seventy-one thousand six hundred.
Where are you?
So on the...
Oh, that's a software maintenance agreement? Maintenance agreement?
Yep. So that would be if we rolled out Content Manager, which it allows us to, every department that has access to Munis, anytime there's an invoice, you scan it in. You tag it essentially to the expense in Munis.
The total, the total increase is what, six, seven thousand?
Yep, so...
Per contract.
So contractually, the Munis upgrade is sixty-four thousand and thirty dollars. If we added the Content Manager, that would add another seven thousand five hundred and seventy annually. We don't have to add the Content Manager, but again, for record-keeping, W9s, we can scan all that. And to Munis, it's your central hub for, like, having everything stored there.
So you're saying the seventy-one thousand six hundred right now, that includes that seventy-five?
Yes.
In that total?
Yep.
And, and that will allow us to decrease files, that will allow us to...
Save paper, which would actually bring down...
Actually process all our bills, where we could have the invoices coming in electronically. We wouldn't have to process them manually. And Nick and I know, probably in two to three years, Munis is going to mandate that.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's not the NearMap thing?
No, so...
And Mr. Inkley asked something about the seventy-five-hundred bucks. I just want to make sure that's seventy-five-hundred bucks. You're talking about that Content Manager stuff onto that?
The Content Manager is the seventy-five-seventy...
So it's not like we have to do that this year?
Correct. I was just asking if that was included in this price that he put in.
The big, the big number, the seventy-one thousand, yeah. So I mean, if we're starting to scrape nickels later on, which I would anticipate we're going to start scraping nickels.
Yeah, we could...
We could, we could look at that, but the prediction is, three years from now, it's going to cost ten grand.
Yeah, I'm just asking, just, so, just for clarification, just in case, we do have to have every option open?
Yeah, which is why I kind of had put it separate, because it is a nice thing to have. But again, we could cut it, because we were actually able, once we looked at the Munis bill, we saw that we were paying for boat excise tax, which we don't use. So we were actually able to talk to Munis, cut that out, and then get the project module. And the project module's actually very nice, because like projects with DPW, they do certain streets, you're able to open up a project for each one, and it lets you track them better. So that's a very good use case for Munis, that we're able to add, just by cutting something that we weren't even rolling out.
And it's, it actually, it goes right to the DOT software, that project. So you're talking directly to DOT, getting all the figures from them. You can actually set it up where eventually we're going to have to, through the grant portals, have all of that going in and out to the Commonwealth.
As long as, as long as the person in charge of that understands that the only thing that's going to DOT is Chapter ninety, and not the other money we have for paving and things of the kind.
No, I'm saying, for example, if we did an audit of accepted streets, and we found out there was a discrepancy, we could put it, we could notify DOT through their software right away.
Right, right, yeah. I, I got it.
I can go over a couple more things if you want. Archive Social is originally being paid by school, which was thirty, thirty-four thousand? Thirty-four hundred, sorry. So we kind of realized that most of the accounts under Archive Social is all town-wide. So when I talked to Patrick, I did say that the town would take that from the school, just out of the fact that, I think out of twelve accounts, nine of them are town. And I think it was just because it was originally set up under the previous IT person who was working both. So it kind of had been set up under...
Is that on the record archive? Is it the one you...
That is under the license renewal fees. So the Archive Social, and that basically takes all of the town's social media accounts and archives it all, so that we're complying with the law.
Yeah, what's the deal with that? That's a monster jump. That's one I have circled. And talking thirty Gs right there alone.
Well, so I, I tried to list all of them. So Archive Social would be thirty-five. Audi monitoring is thirty-five-hundred. Prime, because I did out the math, and it makes more sense for the town to have a business Amazon Prime account than it does to pay for shipping, because of how much purchasing we do. Because without that hundred-and-eighty-dollar membership, we get charged shipping and handling. So the town does enough purchasing where it actually saves us money to have the Prime account. The Fortinet Firewall, that's a yearly renewal. The NearMap is priced into that for the seventy-five-hundred, for the renewal on that. The VMware, which is for our servers, we have virtual servers. Duo is actually a new thing that the insurance company is going to require. We need it in place by July one of the next fiscal year. So that's two-factor for end-users. So that's like, we have to have that, otherwise, I don't know, insurance is going to charge us through the roof for cybersecurity. And then Adobe is, certain departments use that for reporting. And then the online permitting is also what we had taken out of building, which was for the people GIS. So that's just pulling it, again, into the main hub of technology.
And we're going to be controlling the permitting software there.
So that's why that jump...
I mean, this, this is where, you know, unfortunately...
This is like, it's close to food and water for the town.
You're going to be looking at it.
You can't get around this. Yeah, I tried to do a very thorough, like, this is like necessities. Again, the bottom computer hardware, I have, I raised it four thousand dollars, but that's just to have a better life cycle on equipment, because come the end of the year, Heather needed a couple scanners, a couple hundred bucks, computers, someone needs a laptop, you're not looking at anything less than eight hundred dollars. So eight, you know, seven, eight devices for a year. So again, we don't need the four thousand dollar increase, but it would be nice to get a better life cycle of replacing equipment.
So let me ask you this, from a budget standpoint, again, like, if we're looking at one-time expenditures of equipment, is that an operational budget request, or is that a?
Licensing, most of the licensing is operational. We're going to have probably a hundred and twenty-five thousand on the town side article. It would be a two hundred and fifty thousand article, town and school for free cash. One thing we've got is we've got a server that if we have to shut it down, we will not be able to restart it, and it's a very essential server.
Going back to paper, you won't need to spend any of this money.
Yeah, the own, the copy machine line will just have to go up more, because that's what paper.
Yeah, there you go, right? All right, good point. I think, to be, to be fair, I think. I, I think to be fair is, with you leading the Technology Department, Nick along with Mr. Kelly, I think to be fair is, I, I, when you see these kind of increases, is you guys need to look at it and, and be prepared for that big cut.
Yeah.
And determine what is absolutely needed to put a hold in, in recommend to the board, "Hey, we can't go any deeper than this, this is a stop here, but we can give you twenty-five, whatever the number may be, we don't know where we're going to be at." I'm, I'm kind of speaking prematurely, but I've been through this rodeo a few times and, and money, there's only that much money left, every year, pretty consistently, right? New growth doesn't change that dramatically, and even when you do have that spike, like we had a few years, I think it was 2019, we seen six hundred and thirty-four thousand in new growth, and everybody's like, "Oh, yeah." The problem is, is once you put that into the budget, and the next year falls back to just use an arbitrary number again of four hundred, you've got a two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar shortfall that you're trying to compound off of. So you should never go with that one-off, right? One year doesn't make a trend, right?
Yeah.
You've got to kind of do a trend, three to five years, and look at what your trend is, and maybe use that as more of a model when you're trying to do finance versus what you're doing.
Okay, so we're going to hold off on this, because it's a big jump, we'll put that off in the other bucket. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, next item, town buildings.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we've been advertising and trying to hire a foreman. We have not been successful even at the price we have here. I'm going to, we've got to sit down and figure out what we're going to do as far as someone to oversee the crew. We have some part-time employees and senior workaholic folks doing the maintenance right now. I'm moving both custodian, the part-time custodian, the full-time custodian from library and COA into this account. That gives us a little bit of flexibility as far as on assignments, and it also shows the transparency of the fact that you have this individual, these individuals doing this work, but being paid out of the other budgets. The temporary, I talked about reassigning that because of the youth work program. Looking at a maintenance, as you could see, we had to close the parting ways building on Monday because we had a pipe break over the weekend, and we had to go through the wall to find out it wasn't insulated and that we had a problem, so there's a lot of maintenance to be done, and we have to figure out how to do it. I think that rather than do it externally and have to contract everything, there should be a maintenance crew in place, there should be a custodial crew in place. And I'm not saying this is the design that we actually need, but I wanted to start the conversation, and it's going to be on the agenda for the board on the fourteenth to continue the conversation. As you can see, we have a lot of items under expenses, also including custodial services, which are for this building, the police station, and parting ways. We just have to examine how we're going to do this and keep the buildings in repair. You've been using two young gentlemen in the past to do a number of projects. Like I said, we're using part-time help and senior workaholic to do those projects now. I don't have a complete answer yet, but we're just continuing to maintain at a very minimal level, and I'd like that conversation to continue next week.
So the custodials, out of the increase, the custodians, the salary you have for custodial is like forty-four thousand. Forty-one thousand, four hundred and nineteen of that came from the council on agent in the library. So that's not like a new position? It's just taking the two figures that you've used from those two buildings, put it underneath of a town building umbrella, right? And you only added like two or three thousand bucks to it.
Now, it's the, the raise is under.
Contractual for the ASME?
Yup.
So that's fine. And then the contractual services for janitors. You've got to be careful what we do there, because I, I think if you talk to the police chief, you're not just hiring, you know, anybody. Sticking them over there, I think contractual services, I think we need to stick with that and have a plan, like, do you have that guy, Mike?
Mike.
He goes in those buildings and cleans and does this and does that and all that stuff, and we probably need to get some leaf blowers in here to clean out the leaves and stuff. But I think that's important, that we maintain that. And then we just operate in that other number, which is only a couple thousand bucks from taking from library. That's what I'm saying, you've reshuffled the deck, and it makes it look like certain budgets are going down dramatically, but they're not, because you're just stuffing it somewhere else, so all in all.
I'm putting it, contextually where it should be.
I think it's better for the organization to have it like that. Simply put, is, that person should just be answering to the town administrator, or those people should be answering to the town administrator, where you have somebody contracted out for library, maybe contracted out for council on agent in here, and then you have all these different, and everybody's kind of going off, and oh my God, this ain't, and it just becomes a little bit of a mess. So from a professional standpoint, I think it looks better and feels a little bit better having it underneath of the town buildings umbrella.
Yup, too many bosses in the way.
And I've been tracking people, right?
Yup.
So what are we going to do here? We're good?
It's a huge.
I'd like the conversation to continue.
So we'll put this off, we'll hold this off?
Well, it's more, we have to look at all the, the whole organization as far as the maintenance of the buildings.
Right, okay.
In all, in all honesty, by the way it looks, I mean, if you. Can I just ask something about postage too, man? You take that and shave it fifty percent, that's a lot of shaving.
We took the postage out of there because we were paying a vendor, not the postage machine vendor, we were paying a vendor for postage on the tax bills out of this account when it's really should come out of the treasurer's collective's account. So I moved that money.
Oh, so that's just moved from one line again, shot it over there? And then, and then you did, I mean, energy, I mean, who does that? My energy bill doubled and you went, again, better than a fifty percent reduction. I mean, let me know who y'all use it for, provider, so I can switch, because I'm getting slotted.
You were, you were taking certain energy things out of here. I will bring the whole energy thing and show where it was flowing to other places that in the budget that you weren't really accounting for.
Okay, boss.
We're trying to get this so organized.
I, I got it, I know by all the reshuffling I've seen.
All right, next item, legal services.
All right, this one, just so you know, I did a shot across the bow, increasing it from sixty-seven, five to eighty, just so the board would remember that we've been hitting the reserve fund multiple years. And even if you factor out one major issue, you're still spending more than sixty-seven, five, because every year you've been conflating the seventeen thousand that's supposed to be for land court into your legal budget at the end of the year. And this year, because of the fact that we're doing the tax collection of the uncollected taxes over the last four or five years, we're going to have to go to land court with some of it. And as, and we're also going to have to go with the tax title attorney, which I moved ten thousand out of the treasurers into the legal because it's a legal budget that should have that in it. But right now, just so you know, we've collected a hundred and twenty thousand of the unpaid taxes, and we've got two major hits coming up in the next three weeks, so we should be a lot further along. But we're going to have to go to land court, and so that seventeen thousand isn't going to be available. And so in the future, if we don't have to go to land court, then that money would go to free cash, but it's an entirely different account, different attorney.
Yeah, well, it's unfortunate, but sometimes that's the cost of doing business as a municipality, right?
And you might as well know who town council, what town council is costing you versus what your land court council is costing you versus what your tax title council is costing you. And just so the board knows, I don't think I'm violating open meetings since we're talking about the legal budget, if Mr. Higgins is listening. But we sent the RFP out for legal services. We put it in the register. We also directly mailed one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven of the usual suspect municipal law firms directly with the RFP. And we'll be getting responses in March.
Okay, very good. Next one, under miscellaneous. Gentlemen, I'm going to take a crack at this one. There's a few things in there that I think we could cut and maybe approach it from a different, come at it from a different angle. And I'm a big celebrations and beautification person. In fact, I think I put this in there in nineteen ninety-eight when I first came on board. This is like the wreaths and all these different things. But I'm wondering if that's like a free cash appropriation? Because it's a one-time thing, we take it year to year, and then I can tell you this, the Lake Street Improvement, we got two grand there, that was for administrative services. We don't need that as well. So if we were to take those three items out, and again, like, approach celebrations and beautification from a free cash approach as an article at town meeting? Because that would free up sixty-five hundred bucks.
I can, but it's, it might, the celebrations and beautification is something that is used every year, and it's not on a one-time or one-item thing. And it's used for like the flowers.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that, I'm just wondering if we can approach it.
I'll take the Lake Street Improvement, take your advice on the two thousand bucks and get rid of the other, the other chair, right?
The beautification maybe should go in the town building.
I'm just wondering.
Or can we go look on corporate sponsors? We don't need to reshuffle the deck too much on, on, I'm going to steal from Peter, put it somewhere else and be confused the shit out of, the crap out of everybody on where this money's going. I've already dealt with the reshuffling thing and figuring out where this money's gone, and we're moving it from one budget to another, and a lot of it makes sense. I think this is a pretty basic budget, it's, what, eight line items and a total amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Don't think that if we need major cuts, we're going to a fifteen thousand dollar budget. I think we're going to the big, big fish, right? I'll take the two grand of the.
This was already cut five thousand, the budget.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
It's a third of what we need for the library increase.
Yup, I'd rather do that.
Can we try this? Again, I'm, I'm all for these things, but if we could create a gift fund, right? Which we're allowed to do, and Bob, if you would be willing to put out on social media, just to, if, if, there may be corporate sponsors out there, people that want to contribute to the beautification and the celebration of the town. There may be people out there, again, I'm not trying to be cheap here, but, you know, maybe there's some, because we're talking about sixty-five hundred dollars for a library position, that's sixty-five hundred dollars right there.
Yeah.
Right? So again, there's some very generous people out there who might want to contribute to something like that. You know, for tax write-off purposes or whatever, we'll recognize them appropriately, I mean, we've done that.
See the signs at all the various parks that are built and stuff like that?
Right, you know.
I'll make, I'll make a motion, motion to strike two thousand dollars from the Lake Street Improvement Committee, vice chairman, on us recommendation.
I'll second. Aye.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Again, I'm trying to look at this like, not nickel and dime, but also if we can approach these things from a different, different way and get creative, I mean.
We're going to have to, so appreciate that.
I mean, we've got vendors that we deal with, right? Who might want to contribute, you know. Happens every day.
All right, can't take more than forty-nine dollars.
Very good, next item, under select board.
It's, even though there's an upcoming change, I didn't change anything there. I think in upcoming discussion at the end of the meeting, we can talk about that change that involves strategy. And as far as that goes, the Code Red was taken out and moved to technology, and pretty much even before we did that, it was a level-funded budget.
Budget's down ninety-two oh six year over year, based on what Mr. Kelly said about the ninety-two hundred bucks for Code Red. So down ninety-two hundred and six dollars.
So we can agree on that one?
Yup.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Favor?
Aye. So moved.
That's it.
That's it, it's a wrap. But, you know what, we've got a few other things, but Mr. Francois, Mr. Ellis have been really patient, so we're going to take you out of order and bring you up. Thank you, Kevin. Planning Department, we've got a few items. First of all, this is under old business, we've got solar permitting, decommissioning, CERPED, and reorganization discussion. First of all, Mark, thank you in the planning board for your help last week as we were trying to go through that mill design issue. You know, I was encouraged by the tone of the other proponents. Hopefully the, the actions will match up with the words.
Yeah, I think it'll take a little bit of time, but I think they're finally kind of seeing the big picture, and I think they're going to get it right.
All right, Jamie and Mr. Francois.
Well, two of you have participated in our sessions on solar. and how we've been working with these groups to actually stop the destruction of the land. And we are going to be doing more meetings this week because we've had a request from a group that has multiple solar arrays to be constructed in town. Their representative has informed us that they've changed contractors. They're no longer using the contractor that another solar group was using. And they want to sit with the town and come up with a plan of exactly how to do things right. And how not to strip land right before the winter so we have floods and mudslides. I think when we've finally convinced everybody to sit in the same room with us and we've told them how we would work with them. And if they didn't work with us, then they could talk to our attorneys and have a number of cease and desist orders given to them. And we also had to rework their surety.
Not to interrupt, but what Jamie's talking about is the Nexamp. There's four Nexamp projects coming up in town. Only one of them on Cushing Lane actually has a building permit. That's actually been put on hold because they got some issues with conservation. So to just kind of add a little bit more light, there are only three building permits issued right now for solar projects. One of them is Five Fifty Main, that's gonna cease and desist. That's not going anywhere yet, where they're working with conservation. And they have to come back in front of the board. The other one is the Driving Range with the same company. That one's going okay. That one's meeting everything. That one's the only solar project that's actually moving along.
On that one, there's gonna be appropriate buffers, right? So people won't see it.
Yeah, and then there's the Cushing Lane. That's the other one that has a building, building permit. Is eight, if I can recall correctly, eight that have special permits that have been approved through the planning board. But those don't have building permits yet. So I'm gonna request the new building inspector, Andy Ebola, that we're gonna take a little bit deeper dive on those eight before any building permits are issued. Not only with the planning board, but conservation as well, just to make sure that we don't hit any snags like we did with Five Fifty. And it's kind of just give a little perspective on what happened. Years ago, before I came into the picture, and I don't know the answer of why it happened, but what was happening was the departments weren't talking to each other. Basically is what was happening. Conservation wasn't talking of planning, planning wasn't talking to, and building inspector wasn't either. The three departments basically were, the way I see it, this is just my personal opinion, the three departments were working independently. And when a change was made in the building department, well, the other two departments were notified. And then that person or that proponent would come back in front of the planning board and ask for something, and we would approve it, or they would approve it. But they didn't know that they had gone somewhere else and we shouldn't have approved it. You follow what I'm saying? There just wasn't enough communication. Now, I don't know why that ended up happening. But like Mr. Kelly just said, we have been talking a lot. And now every department is CC'd on every email. Everybody knows what's going on. We, I've been doing a brunt of this because we don't have a town planner at the moment, which I'm okay with. I mean, that's kind of one of the reasons why I stepped on board. Excuse me. But in the future, and I've spoken with conservation, I am gonna speak with Andy Ebola, the town inspector. That is a must. That is something that needs to continue. The boards need to stay in communication. And then situations like Five Fifty won't happen, shouldn't happen again.
Could you, would you consider as, you're chairman of the planning board, right?
Oh, yeah.
As an operating procedure or a policy of the planning board that the planning board will not consider any project until there's a comprehensive report by all of the parties?
Yeah, and it's something that Mr. Gasfett brought up. We've all spoken, there's gonna be this, you know, list. And you basically gotta go down the list. And you have to go to conservation after you meet. Before the final spot of building permit, everybody has to be seen and everybody has to sign off on it. And if for some reason somebody signed off on it and they get back in front of that board again, well, it starts all over. You gotta go back and you talk to everybody else. Or all the boards have to be notified of what was changed. That is, you know-
So you're working on that?
It's been working on, Doug actually started it before he left with the bubble list.
The flow chart.
Flow chart, thank you very much. Doug started that, and it's something we're gonna continue. Which is also on the agenda here, is we need a town planner. We need a town planner that will, you know, spearhead a lot of these things. Doug started, and he actually was doing a really good job and was working us in the right direction. Unfortunately, he left, and we've been out without a planner for some time. That's something that we need to discuss.
Yeah, yeah. Going back to the solar, and I don't know if this is allowed by law, but if it, you know, as a town, could we implement a local contractor provision for the solar as a condition, right? So a proponent, they gotta use a local contractor, either a Cushinga-based company?
That's something, that's a lookout.
I don't know, if that's not allowed, is that a bylaw? You know, because I've seen in other municipalities, you go, okay, minority-owned or it's-
You can have a list of contractors that, for example, like you use for drain layers. That type of concept. But it is something that you have to have certain criteria. Usually it's you have to have certain insurances. And then you can petition and get put on the list. But you can't, you're self-limited to five contractors that are all from town.
Got it, okay.
Another thing, we got here, we know of permitting and what we have permitted at the moment. Decommissioning, decommissioning is an issue that we have. A lot of the, believe in the Nexamp, they wanted to sit down with us and talk about decommissioning. We just recently went to bonds where before it was cash charities. Now we're going into bond charities, which is much better for the proponent. The way it works now, correct me if I'm wrong, is the proponent comes in with a plan. Their engineer says it's gonna cost X amount of money to decommission. It goes in front of peer review, and there's multiple different engineering companies peer review. And then they look over the plans, and then they agree, yes, it's gonna cost this much to decommission. Or they change the number, and then we come to an agreement somewhere in the middle of what it costs to decommission a solar project. I was talking to Pat Hannon in conservation, and I think we should try to adopt a set schedule. So basically, if you have, you know, three hundred panels, it's gonna cost you this much to decommission. And then you do a twenty-year escalate with two-point-five percent increases every year. And that's what it is. We're not gonna have this engineer say one price, that engineer say another price, and their engineer, and then before you know it, prices are all over the place. So if we had a set schedule that said, you know, three hundred panels is this, five hundred panels, and then if you have a battery storage size of this size, it's gonna cost you this, and it all goes by size, it's gonna cost this much to decommission. If we had that right off the bat, then anybody coming in to put in a solar project can just say, okay, this is how many panels we have. And you can't go by wattage because different panels create different wattage. So it'll be different amount of panels. So if we had something already in black and white, we put the line in the sand, not the engineer, not the solar company.
So what do you need, do you need a bylaw or is that just a policy?
I'm not exactly sure on that. That's something that I was wanting to talk to Jamie about. That might be something we might have to incorporate into the new solar bylaw. That might be something we put into the new town meeting. Another thing, since we're on that subject, when Doug created the solar bylaw, he was a little conflicted on what to do with the trees. So right now, we have it to where if you cut down trees, you gotta try to replant. Or I'd like to adopt or make a motion at the town meeting to put a money, a money price on a tree. So anything over six inches, it's gonna be difficult to cut down four acres of trees or nineteen acres of trees and replant from somewhere. But if you had a dollar amount, I don't know what that dollar amount would be, on anything over six inches, well, then it goes into the solar fund. And then that solar fund can go into different things that we need.
Right, yeah, I agree.
Because Five Fifty Main Street cut down way more than they should have.
Because if you're Deb, right, who lives there?
Right.
What good is planting trees?
Somewhere else.
You know, like, you know, in my neighborhood. It doesn't help, right? So I understand the, you know, the big picture, the macro, but like-
There's a dollar behind it.
It's gonna be something for that neighborhood, isn't it? Like, well, we're there, you know, like, I don't know what it would be, but, you know.
It's also-
I think you're on the right track.
It's also, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna be investigating because the solar panels are impervious surfaces. Then there might be, there's an issue with stormwater. There's a lot of communities now are having a fee for those impervious surfaces that goes into the stormwater issues that are coming off all these sites. Because even if you decommission, you might be, end up with sites that have ponds on them that you could end up having an issue with.
Okay, great.
So everything Mr. Francois said, you know, I think we've been, certain people have been talking about these kind of things, the decommission thing especially. I know it's inadequate, I said at the last meeting. The amounts that we're collecting is ridiculous. I think I've seen like fifty grand on most of these. You ain't doing anything for fifty thousand dollars, and we're gonna be stuck with these now. I don't know if there's any way to backtrack, but for future projects, I agree wholeheartedly with you that it's gotta be done on the amount of panels. Get that scheduled in place. Have a nice day. Don't really care what anybody else says. This is the schedule, this is what it is, as long as we're somewhere in that ballpark of what it would take, right? You can't be ridiculous with the fees, as we learned before with fees. And put that schedule in place, and that's it, it's done. And there's no arguing, this guy comes in, he's got three hundred. That guy comes in, it's three hundred. It's the same cost for everybody, no matter what it is. It is what it's not, depending on who you are walking through the door. And I think it should be added to the bylaw for the simple fact that you can't waive a bylaw. So it's not up to any board or commission that there's discretion to waive fees.
Right, right. And I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think some of the fees that you're seeing in there that are, you know, thirty-five, fifty thousand dollars, those were when it was cash. Granted, it's still low, granted, it's still low. But when it goes to bond, it goes much higher.
Sure, because, I mean, the bond, the cash value of a bond is only two percent, right? So I mean, you're carrying whatever that is. You can get a two million dollar bond, and you're carrying the same forty thousand dollars, right? Fifty thousand bucks. It's peanuts, you know?
Twenty years, that's not doing anything.
It's nothing. So I mean, it's always in, it's in the proponents best interest, the applicant, proponent, whatever you wanna call it, to do a bond, it's way cheaper for them. And have that in place, and it's a lot better off for the taxpayers of a Cushinga in twenty, twenty-five years.
I agree.
So.
All right, we got SERPED, what's that?
Doug would see as a SERPED representative from the planning area. And so this board and their board will have to pick someone to be the SERPED representative.
Mr. Ellis is a-
When Mark's done, I just have one, I have one thing that I would like to go over in public with the board here.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. What I wanna wait till, Mr. Francois's done.
Back to SERPED, I think that needs to be somebody who's employed by the town.
I agree.
I don't think any of the board members should be doing that. It definitely should be the town planner. Until the town planner is hired, then things fall on Mr. Kelly. If Mr. Kelly wants to, then Mr. Kelly does it, if not-
I'm already a SERPED representative.
Oh, you're already? So I mean, I don't wanna lose out on anything, but I think it just would incentivize the town or the board to hire a town planner.
Mr. Ellis? Oh, Mr. Mark, do you have anything left? I'm sorry.
The only thing that we have left is at the very bottom, the reorganization discussion. But if Mr. Kelly, Mr. Ellis-
Go on, please.
For the reorganization, for the town planner, Mr. Kelly has presented to the planning board and to you gentlemen, his idea of what he wants to do as far as the new town planner is concerned. Getting feedback from the members of the planning board, one member feels that that position is a little bit overkill for this size town. He doesn't, he doesn't think we have the commercial, like, Metropoys and Dartmouth and some of the other towns to warrant having somebody of that caliber. Another board member was a little worried about adding somebody of that caliber, or somebody who would basically take over or be in charge of all the departments, would ask for a lot more money than what we are now offering the town planner. Again, monies are with you guys, you guys figure out where the monies go. But this one board member feels it would be a little expensive. Myself, I think this town needs a full-time town planner. We had a part-time planner with-
Henry Young?
Henry. I don't think that's enough. I think we need a full-time town planner. There's a lot of monies out there and grants and whatnot that we need a town planner to look into. We need somebody who can do the master plan or help out the master plan. We need, we need somebody in that office when somebody comes off the street needing to talk to somebody. So I feel, in my opinion, we need a full-time planner. With that being said, the money that we were paying Doug is not enough for somebody to come in and wanna make a career out of it. We'll hire somebody at fifty grand, that person's gonna come in like Doug and then get some experience, put something on his resume, and they're gone. And we'll be back in this situation year in, year out. And we need to shuffle, do what you gotta do, but we need to find monies to increase a little bit, you know? Go from fifty to seventy, seventy-five. But we need to have somebody who's in that plan. And that person can be the director of economic development. He can look into what we can do more in this town, what lands are available to increase commercial and taxes. And that's what that person's job would be. You get a part-timer in here, that person's not gonna, not gonna be able to do it.
I agree. I'm not gonna speak for anybody else here other than myself. I think it's been a big frustration of mine over the years that, we all come into contact with people and say, geez, I'd love to do business in a Cushinga. I'd love to open a business in a Cushinga. And to be honest, I don't own the town, right? Like, go to the same thing, well, you know, maybe there's something on South Main Street. Maybe there's this and that. The reason why we don't have any commercial is because we don't have anybody, right? So it's like, we don't, you know, with all due respect to your board member, we don't need, we don't need somebody there because we don't have this stuff. The reason why we don't have this stuff is because we don't have somebody there, right? And somebody who's qualified, who can chase down the grants and make things better for the businesses that are in place here. You know, I think unfortunately, we've regressed. I think we've gone back to the nineteen eighties. You know, like, we're not keeping up with the trends. I mean, there's opportunities to create small little business parks in town that would still preserve the town's character. I mean, you've got tech, I mean, it's not always just machinery, right? And trucks and this and that. There's opportunities to do things that would blend in with the community that we're not doing. And so I wholeheartedly endorse that. I think the ROI would be there in one grant, chasing down one grant, you know? You pay for it and then some.
And then you, Mr. Kelly spoke about legal fees. I mean, if you got somebody in there that knows what they're doing- I mean, if you got somebody in there that knows what they're doing, then you gotta go to town council, maybe a little bit less. And you get a little bit less legal fees. But whatever we do, uh, whatever you decide, I think we need to decide relatively quick because it's gonna be a process to find the right person.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Real quick on that. So we had a town planner making forty-seven thousand bucks. He was originally a grant writer, um, with a little bit of money in the board of selectmen's salary, in the board of selectmen's budget, like ten grand, the other thirty-something was in the planning boards. And you know what? Let's not really call that a part-time town planner because that part-time town planner for forty-seven thousand dollars was here about three hours a week and that was well-known throughout this community for years. And he was here for over a decade. That's first. It wasn't nineteen and a half hours, which is really considered part-time. Then we brought in the young man right out of, fresh out of school. The problem with that is we don't have somebody that's, has that experience and doesn't have that knowledge of the town of Akushna and what we can and can't do. We can say we're gonna develop South Main Street all we want. The development's already put in place where there's sewerage. So nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna be able to build on the other side of Century House and put in business because there's no sewer down there yet. There's no sewer really anywhere left for space for development. So that's, that economic development pathway is kind of bogus. I understand that we need it and we can, we can all, we, the townies, as I call ourselves, like all of us are, that have been here for a long time. I think we all understand, including the existing members on the planning board, where certain things can be done and where they can't be done. We don't need an outsider to come in and go, this is what you're gonna do there and this is what you're gonna do there. That's for all of us to decide at town meeting. Quite honestly, the taxpayers of Akushna will decide where these kind of things end up. So there's a, there's a number of different things. We have a master plan. We need an update on the master plan. We had a town planner here. We still have a master plan in place that was done in two thousand and eight. And we've gone a few things done, but I'll say this, seventy-five percent of it hasn't been done. So, you know, we talk about add-in salaries and, you know, we gave the guy fifty. He cried. We gave three thousand dollars in less than a year. He still cried. I need a ten thousand dollar raise. Is that really what we're bringing to the town of Akushna? I, I think from my perspective, and I agree that certain things, we, we do need certain things. The planning board does need somebody. But I spend a lot of time in these buildings and I, and I walk by that planning board office and I get department heads sitting around shooting the breeze pretty much consistently. I'm not so sure I need somebody else to join that party and shoot the breeze and tip cups of coffee all morning. So I, my recommendation for the planning board, because really it's something that you guys really need to consider would be is, why don't we get serious about trying to pay somebody a decent salary for a real part-time position? You know, twenty hours, twenty-five hours, whatever it may, and give him the good salary that we already have budgeted. And let's see how that works out. Instead of trying to create this conglomerate position where now you're gonna hire a newcomer and maybe you're talking seventy, seventy-five, good luck with that, with all the credentials that he's gonna need, right? We all know how the label pool is. And isn't that disrespectful to everybody else that's already kinda? And I understand we need more accountability on, on certain department heads. But that's how I see it, is you're gonna bring in a newcomer and that person's gonna be going bing, 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 and playing wack-a-mole. I just think that if, if we did things a little bit more efficient and, and we really start talking about, you know, what we had and what we didn't have and we paid him, but he wasn't happy, he wasn't ever happy. I can tell you that. I dealt with that person, the newest person. So I think if the planning board says, hey, you know what, let's give it a go. Because I don't think it warrants thirty-five hours a week in that office. Quite honestly, we ain't got that much going on in planning. Let's, let's get over that. Or any of these departments is, pay a decent salary upfront for a part-time position. Maybe, maybe even somebody that's already been in the game and is familiar with all the, the grants and everything else. Because you're not gonna get a newcomer that's gonna be that aggressive of doing that. You're gonna pay stupid money for no reason. Pay somebody decent money for a part-time nineteen and a half hour. Maybe it's somebody that's already retired. I mean, we got Mr. Bobola in our building, um, um, office right now. Incredible, right? And we're paying him a full-time position. I get it because we kinda, we had that salary flowing. But maybe in the planning board, you, you take that approach first and see what happens and then, and then maybe expand on it down the road. But to say that we need to, seventy's not gonna be good enough, we gotta up that salary. We're dealing with that right now with treasurer, collector and town accountant, right? We'll have that discussion. We table those budgets. But that's a discussion where you'd have to up salaries, those are key positions. And when we're talking about paying that kind of a position and that kind of importance to a municipality and you're talking about bringing in this person over here for a planner at seventy-five grand, doesn't that put this board in a real awkward position versus what we're paying other department heads already? And, and pinning that, and that's how it's gonna go for us that have to negotiate these salaries down the road. So I think that's the problem when people look at salaries, is they're not calculating what we already know and what we already have to do to keep things at bay, right? The biggest expense the town has as far as the budget goes is salaries and health insurance costs. So all I'm saying is maybe consider that. Maybe put your feelers out there. Maybe we do an advertisement and see if you can attract somebody. I mean, you got fifty-three thousand dollars in that budget. I'm not saying give somebody fifty-three for a nineteen and a half hour job, but you can surely work within the scope of the current salary and, and put a number on it. Maybe it is a, a good chunk. Maybe it's forty of the fifty, right? That's eighty. That's eighty full-time.
So in your opinion, when we had a part-timer, everything ran smooth?
Not saying anything was done right. I'm saying that we managed from two thousand and seven when that individual was hired, okay? Because I was on the finance committee when that occurred and I said, how long's he gonna be? And it's like three years till we're done with the master plan. And it was two thousand and twenty before he was gone, okay? Because he wanted some ridiculous amount of more money. And he was only working here for three hours a week if you're lucky.
Right.
And that's shame on everybody that was watching this and supposed to be in control of these people. And that's my problem, is accountability should be first, first and foremost. And if we can prove to our taxpayers that we're holding everybody accountable for the amount of money that we're paying these people to do the job and do it right, not to end up with a Navasun, in other words, right? Then we got our act together and then we can go to town people and say, this is the reason why we need to do this and, and we're asking for that because we wanna be better at what we do and proceed with X, Y and Z down the road. Proof to them. But unless and until that's been proven, as a taxpayer, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting there going, really? You want me to add another salary? Big salary?
Well, I respectfully disagree with what you're saying. I feel just, I feel a lot of the issues, and you've brought them up in past meetings. Jamie, Jamie's brought them up in past meetings. Things outside, this isn't done. This is all stuff that's been coming up from when we had a part-time.
It's called accountability, Mark. Accountability. These people again paid big dollars, okay? Some of our people that are no longer here anymore got paid big dollars and they weren't held accountable. Okay? And that's what led to these problems. It's about accountability first and foremost. And once we get our act together there, then we move forward. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know what townspeople would do if they'll approve a seventy-five, eighty thousand dollar position.
I agree that accountability needs to be addressed right away. I'm still digging into this reorg thing. Um, there's a lot of parts of it that I am interested in. A lot of ideas in it that I'm interested in. But I still would like to keep digging into, figure out if there's a way we can do this without, like I said, having a complete reorganization.
Yeah, as far as that reorganization, I think Jamie brings up a lot of valid points. I think a lot of them are too big for this size town. That whole reorg, I, I, again, if we were bigger, I think his ideas would be beautiful. I don't think we need a full reorg. We do need accountability. We do need a checklist. We do need communication throughout the, the, the boards. But just being a chairman and dealing with Navasun these last few months, it's a lot of work. And I don't, I'm not doing nothing minute amount compared to what a town planner would have to do. And there's a lot involved. There's a lot of talking to Paul Sullivan, now the clerk. All the reading and all the information that needs to be gathered and everything, it's, it's a lot of work. And if you want it to run properly, you get the proper person. Somebody at McDonald's makes fifty thousand a year. You need to pay that person proper, else we're just gonna be a rotating door. That's, that's my two cents.
Man, I'm going to McDonald's.
You guys decide what you wanna do, uh, but in my opinion...
Here's the thing though, Paul, Mark, Mr. Francois. You're a duly elected board, right? You're the planning board. My advice to you would be, you exercise that authority and make the case. You know, you, you develop a budget. It's up to us. Mr. Gaspar's against it. We don't, we don't necessarily need our blessing. It's a town meeting discussion. I mean, that, that's the process. But I agree, I mean, we're spinning our wheels. Try the part-time. You can argue whether the guy was the right guy or not. Part-time model, doesn't work. Full-time model with a part-time salary, that doesn't work, right? We're spinning our wheels and we're stuck in neutral and it's disappointing. And that's why if you look at the problems we have in this town, it's because, I mean, look, we, we finally looked at Mr. Kelly and his salary. We were initially advertising a buck twenty. That's a lot of money. But not to bring on somebody who knows what the heck they're doing. We went on the cheap last go-around. Where'd that get us? We, we, we crept it up to one forty-five and change, which is still low by other standards. Thankfully, Mr. Kelly took the offer. And we're seeing with that, you get what you pay for, right? And so that's my feeling, but, you know, you're, you're a separate...
I'll, I'll wanna take a backseat on the dollar remote right now. Because, I mean, what is, what has been a continuous problem between the... Is to try and get some continuity in personnel. However that happens, I don't know. But we had initially, I'm just gonna pick the solar thing, uh, as, as an example. We had one person in char, or one person available to put together a package on zoning for solar arrays. It was a new thing. I mean, nobody in the state of Massachusetts had much, uh, much experience with it. Something was put together, parts of it worked, parts of it didn't work. The guy that helped to start it is gone. Now we have somebody else, new guy. Out of school, basically, uh, and he put together another package, which was better than the first one. He's gone now. There were a number of problems with, with the process in of itself. And I'm not even gonna begin to get into those. But a person with some continuity in experience with this town and, and with the process would have been able to work, uh, with the town departments that were involved in this. Stormwater, conservation, you know, board health, building department, to make sure that the process progressed in some kind of reasonable fashion. That's, that's what I see as one of the biggest problems, is the continuity part. Because if you had the same person there at the first part of the process to where we are now, not only would we be dealing better with what happened this time, but we would already have things in process to change the second version to make it even better. So things were more well-controlled, uh, through the construction process. One of the things with the planning board is that the things that we deal with have changed over the decades. You know, when I got on, I don't know, close to forty years ago, uh, I forget what the number is, a long time ago, we were having subdivisions like crazy. No planner. Subdivision regulations that went back to the, the dawn of time that had to be updated. No planner. You know, nobody to sit down and say, okay, we're starting to get some real activity with subdivisions. These subdivisions, rules and regulations are thirty years old. We need to start right now to change them. And I need to go take a look at other examples from other communities and get something that's going to work better. Instead of depending on part-time elected people, uh, for, for free to do those things. We had a, a project with the, uh, the mini mart over there. That was, that was the second one in town to deal with, but this, this, the same thing. If we had had somebody with some continuity and some experience so that we could turn to that person at the meeting and say, can we legally say no? Can, can we, do we have to approve this? If we don't approve it, how can we put the disapproval in a fashion that's not gonna put the town into court later on and cost far more than, you know, a few legal opinions from time to time? But it has to be a person who's got some experience and some continuity to just try and, and, and manage millions of dollars in construction like these solar arrays are with a part, or the person that comes and goes every two or three years, it's not gonna work very well. It, I don't know how to do it, but continuity is important. And going through people every few years is, is not gonna, not gonna do it. You know, whether, whether it's some master person that, you know, you have the selectman, the town administrator and the quote planner, whatever he is, that, if that's the chain of command, there needs to be one established, like, like you were saying, Mr. Gaspar. That has to happen so that when you guys see a problem, you can convey it to the town administrator, who can convey it to the planner or any other one of the, the boards that, and, and departments that work with these things. But continuity, that's, that's what I would like to see, continuity.
I couldn't agree more, Mr. Ellis. You're a very wise man.
I'm sorry, I said something, but I had, I didn't, I didn't get it anywhere.
You're a very, you're a very wise man. You have a number of years of experience in construction. So I would never wanna have to sit and debate you when it comes to that. And I, and I totally agree, but, I mean, we've had that, that so-called person that was like the planner, right? And I, I keep going back to that because all I want, all I'm asking is just to try something and, and have that person. I'm not disagreeing to have that person. But I don't know if we need that person for thirty-five hours and paying them eighty thousand, ninety thousand dollars.
I'm not, I'm not sure what we need. And I think it has to evolve with time. I mean, we have needs today. You know, we will have different needs tomorrow and we'll have different needs ten years from now. So it's, it's naturally gotta evolve. But it, it will work better if we can keep people here for five to ten years and put them in a chain of command so that they're doing what needs to be done. You know, that, that's, that's the other important part. And you're absolutely right. You know, the salary's fine, the, the job description is fine, but there's gotta be a chain of command to, to get done what needs to be done at that time.
Correct. How, how often do you meet?
Every two weeks now.
Every two weeks? And how often, how long are you meeting typically?
Typically, they can be, I mean, usually nothing less than an hour, half an hour to an hour.
But when we were doing all these solar arrays, you know...
I'm just, I'm trying to get an understanding, like, all right, so if you brought somebody on it at part-time, nineteen and a half hours, how many hours of...
Would that be a meeting?
Are they weed, are they eating up just going to meetings, right?
Oh, at least, you know, ten, ten hours out of the month.
Right, so...
Out of the month.
All right, so then you get eighty, if you get less than eighty hours, you get, you know, ten of those. Just going to meetings, right? Blah, blah, blah. I just, I don't know. I think you need a full-time person to navigate those things. Again, you're, you're a separately elected board. I think you guys come up with your business plan and run it as you see fit, you know?
I mean, some of the things that Mark was talking about with, with the taking down of the trees, you know, with, with Jamie and these decommissioning fees. See, those are all things that should go to the town planner to work out with the town administrator and the selectman, you know, as a whole. And, and again, I don't have the answers how to create a, an attractive job of some size. You know, whether it's twenty hours a week or eighty hours a week so that these things that happen over a number of years don't get lost track of.
Also, here's the deal. You don't have somebody minding the shop, you're ripe for getting abused. I mean, that's what's going on, right? I mean, developers are saying, you know what, Krishnath's a, you know, sitting prey. They've got nobody minding the, the hen house here.
They've been talking about that for years anyway. I mean, think about, I talk to contractors all the time. You try to go to Dartmouth and get away with what you're getting away with over the last five or six years in the town of Akushna and you be laughed right out of the town of Dartmouth. So again, it comes down to accountability, right? Somebody dropped that ball.
All right.
And we, and we're, and we're working on figuring it out, right? I, I, I've said it before, we got some new members on the board, plus some, some older members that have been there for a long time. Mr. Ellis has got an enormous amount of experience, um, just him himself. I mean, he's, he's a, he's a world of knowledge, especially when it comes to our town. And we got members like yourself and Mr. Boucher that are newer members that say, hey, enough is enough. That's why I'm here and I'm on the plan. That's why I'm here and I'm on the planning board because we want to make things right. So we're going to right the ship. And I think that's part of the cause. And I'm not disagreeing in any way, shape, or form. I'm just trying to say is, I don't believe, in my opinion, you need somebody there thirty-five, because that's what the full-time is, some departments, thirty-five hours. Go ahead, advertise it and see what you're going to get and see if you're going to get any bites for seventy thousand bucks. Because now you're upping it almost fifty percent. This is current salary you got in your budget, right? It's fifty-three. And you're going to go to seventy, seventy-five. You're upping that by fifty percent and see what you get. See if you get anybody to take that job with that job description that everybody's describing for seventy-five thousand dollars. I honestly think, I mean, Mr. Kelly's been successful with some people. And I'm not saying we need to do it right away. But I mean, if we're working on a master plan, which we need and all the things that you're talking about to get somebody in that office, maybe the right thing is to go part-time and pay them a nice salary for part-time. Make it attractive. I honestly think it's probably going to be easier to do that than to find somebody to work thirty-five hours a week for the town of Akushan for seventy-five grand.
Put an advertising in for seventy-five, see what you get.
Well, you got to wait until you get tell me to approve for the salary, dude. So that ain't happening. I'm just saying, it's tough right now. Right now, you don't have that money. And right now, we are empty on that vacancy. But you can't go out and advertise for an appropriation. You don't have it. All appropriations, when it comes to personnel, has to be appropriated by town meeting first. So.
So in the meantime, town meetings in May?
May.
So between now and May?
July first is when you can start spending that appropriation.
We do nothing. We don't advertise for the town plan. So we don't get no town plan until May. And then we got to advertise it. It could be months after that before we get somebody. Now we're looking into the end of this year before...
Pretty much what I'm saying, if that's for the appropriation in your current budget, you have fifty-three thousand dollars for a planner. Okay? And that was already up before. That's why I'm making a recommendation is for right now, maybe you do do it that way. You don't have the appropriation to make an advertisement for a full-time position at seventy-five thousand dollars. You're twenty-two thousand dollars shy based on your planning's budget. So that's the hang-up. And that's what sucks for you guys. And that really does suck. I know where you guys are at. I've been listening to your little meetings. I've been partaking in some of these little meetings up there or over these solar fields. And it does, you need somebody other than Paul, the secretary, to be handling these people when they're coming in for requests. I get it. But for right now, hey, maybe that's what you do right now. You advertise at a very attractive salary for a part-time and see if you get anybody to do it. If you don't, bingo, then you move for the full-time salary and, you know, hopefully, town meeting approves it and you go for it. I don't know. It's up to you guys to conversate over at the planning meeting. I mean, that's my advice, is what you have right now to work with, maybe it's worth it to try it. I mean, that's for the planning commission to discuss, you know? I'm just throwing that stuff out to you, you know what I mean? I think that that might be a way for it to work and get somebody longer term. And who knows? I don't know. The labor market's all screwed up right now, Mark, right? Everybody knows that. Doesn't mean that just because, and I've said this for a number of years when we negotiate with our employees, it's just because every other community, a town, is going to be a bunch of yo-yos and just decide to stop paying exorbitant prices for people that don't, doesn't warrant, you know, let's call it a hundred and fifty thousand dollar salary just because X, Y, and Z does it, does that make, should I be doing it as well? And being just as insane as them? And where are we going with all of this? You know? You wouldn't do that if you were running the business. You can't, you couldn't afford to do it. You know? And that's how I look at it. I mean, people look at municipal money like it's funny money. I've heard that by some employees too. And that's grossly overstated. We got to try to work within our means, as I said, with the amount of money we have, all in.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Rick.
Chief Fallon's here. It's time you've been sitting here for all this time, but this...
So I have two things for you on your agenda. Real quick, the first one is a request to use opioid settlement funding. A year and a half ago or so, when Ms. Leonard and Chief Gallagher originally signed us up to be included in the first of the opioid settlements, they hadn't yet developed the fund, like what you could use the funding for. Since then, it's come out, it's extremely narrow. It can be used for, I believe it's after incident assistance for people that experience some of these issues with opioid use. It can also be used for EMS equipment and EMS operations. I sought some clarity from the folks up at the state level that this could be used for EMS equipment and operations, and they did confirm that. The account currently has sixty-eight thousand dollars and change. We will be getting more funding throughout this year. Ms. Leonard is also actually including us on a new round of settlement funding from several other sources. And what I was proposing to use the money for was to replace our cardiac monitors on our ambulances. They're approaching ten years old, which is ten to twelve years is the lifespan on them. They're a fairly expensive piece of equipment. And if we can use an approved cost, approved funding source that doesn't hurt the town's residents or any of our other budgets, I don't see a downside to it. If, for whatever reason, between now and then... So it's an eleven to twelve-month lead time. Payment would only be need to be made after that. So we're talking this time next year. If for whatever reason, the opioid account doesn't have that much, I plan on either through the May town meeting or if we have a special town meeting, making up the gap out of EMS revenue account.
Okay. So what's the ask, what's the number?
Ninety-two thousand dollars is the total that we would need to complete, to replace the two units.
You said sixty-eight was the number?
Sixty-eight is currently in there right now. But we do continue to... So basically, I'm looking for authorization to order them. And then as we get closer to that, I would figure out how to offset.
It could actually be a pretty close gap by the time we get there anyway.
I'm hoping that it more than covers it. But in the event there is existing revenue in EMS, in the EMS revenue account.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if I...
Yeah, yeah, please.
I think, Chief, every time you come in here, you explain a way that you've been bettering this department. And I just want to stop by saying I appreciate that. You're really looking for ways to utilize everything you got. And I personally think that if you think this is necessary, I think it's necessary. So I would make a motion to approve.
Okay. Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item of business is a reserve fund transfer. I've been working with Mr. Kelly over the last couple of months. This winter has not been so good to me. I appreciate Mr. Ellis's words. This is the part where I feel not so nice. Looking for a reserve fund transfer of forty-one thousand dollars, seventeen thousand dollars to go towards building repair and twenty-four thousand dollars to go towards vehicle repair. The Station Three, our EMS facility, our primary EMS facility, had an extreme heat, heating emergency. We lost heat in that building before Christmas and after Christmas. We've completely had to rebuild the boiler and the pump, circulating pump. In addition to that, the garage doors at both Station Three and Station One, there's been four different garage doors that we've had to have emergency repairs on, two of which need parts that they're on order. But in order to complete the repairs, that's what we need the funding for.
Chief?
Yes.
The heating system at the EMS on Middle Route, I know it wasn't so long ago that we did a reserve fund transfer to do something to that heating system.
That I'm not sure with in speaking with the gentleman that did the work. It's original to the building. Actually, yes, you are correct. In 2017, we did replace the circulating pump, which he said they usually last about five years, and we're on six. So we got our money's worth, so to speak, out of that. Circulating pump blew, then the fire blocking inside blew. It hadn't been cleaned in several years. So it was filthy, so that required some maintenance.
I get it. I'm just, I just know that we did some kind of repair.
And just to prepare you guys for...
And it was an emergency repair back then on the heating system.
According to them, it's original to the building, which was a 1995 construction, so we're at almost thirty years. So that's going to need to be, he suggested that within the next year it should be completely replaced. They matched it. But just like with Heather, the CEO, he also mentioned to me the mini splits. So there's plenty of rebates and things like that with Mass Save and with the, to try to figure out the best option to do it.
Yeah.
But that's, I'm not looking at that for next year. We just repaired it.
Curious how those mini splits work. Would heat in the temperatures that we just got?
Go to the library.
That's what we have up there.
And then what do we have?
I was going to say, the library was pretty warm last weekend.
And they work, they work really? They work on problem outdoors like that? How about there in the blizzard, tough guy? So I, whatever, but I mean, that's a capital thing. Like Mr. Won, I said earlier, it's a capital thing. What free cash is there for, stabilization, whatever else. Equipment in this town has been neglected. We should be looking at all of our town buildings to make sure everything is adequate. I mean, we just had that water pipe. Mr. Kelly spoke on that water pipe burst. And I wanted to comment on that. But I'll comment on it now is I want to say thank you to Mr. Rockliff for making the phone call and alerting the town officials that the pipe had burst in that building. And actually, it was Mr. Rockliff that shut that water off in those buildings. So thank you, Mr. Rockliff, for doing that. Because if he hadn't been in that building, that building would have been sinking.
Sometimes maybe lucky or good.
Exactly.
All right.
Motion. Do we have, what do we have for a balance in this reserve fund? That would be helpful.
After this, there will be sixty-four thousand.
You don't see anything, I mean...
Out of a hundred and fifty.
He, I know, but he needs it. So we should be all right, sixty grand left over. Motion to approve...
Don't break anything else.
The reserve fund transfer in the amount of forty-one thousand dollars.
Second.
Next, I'm going to request a line of bubble wrap, and then I won't break it.
Chief, just so the board knows, we had some issues with the walls. And we've been using the maintenance staff to repair the walls. Do you want to tell the board just two minutes?
So real quick, over the last, it's really only become a problem over the last two years. We've started to notice the paint and the drywall, the exterior, the interior drywall paper has been just peeling off of the walls on the exterior walls of Station One, mostly in relation to either directly under the windows or around door frames. So the gentleman that does the senior work off-program and Lucas have been basically spending every Monday through Friday at my building, scraping all of the old stuff off, skim coating. They're working on the last two walls in the day room area. The front, my office, and the dispatch office are all completely skim coated and sanded and ready for paint. And when I get an extra ten, fifteen minutes, I'm slapping some paint on the walls so we can get that looking pretty. And hopefully hold us off.
Are you assuming it's a condensation issue or is that...
I'm assuming it's got something to do with that just because of the location. It's not everywhere. It's only under windows. So I'm assuming something might have not been flashed right or vapor barrier wasn't placed when we designed that building several years back.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chief, thanks for hanging in. All right, back to new business. Update on proposals for insurance.
We put in RFP for health insurance. And we've sent it to Always Health Partners, which is the Mass General Brigham Insurance Company, Gallaghers, who represent Mass Strategic Health Group, Southeastern Mass Municipal Health Group, Cape Guard Municipal Health Group, Maya, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Mayflower Health Group, which is Blue Cross, Blue Shield, then Harvard. Mass Strategic is Harvard. We also, Harvard is what we're doing now as the incumbent. We sent it to them. We sent it to Blue Cross Blue Shield of Mass Direct and Hub International. And a month or so, it'll come back. And we'll see where we're at. We also talked to Maya, Hub International, formerly through Braley, Wellington, and Gallagher's on our P and C to get, to see if we could get a better price. We've had some exclusions under Maya from our IOD and from our legal defense fund. So that's why we're looking to see if the other folks that are in this type of business with municipalities will come back to us. Yeah, Hub International, through Braley, Wellington, Access is Mega, which is the school version of the Cabot and Chub Risk for workers comp. Gallagher's is mostly central mass. Hub International is western mass. But all of them are moving southeast. And so as soon as we get an idea where they're going, I'll report back to the board. But we're out in all these marketplaces.
Perfect, good.
Places you haven't done some of this in twenty years.
All right, the next one. Patriot Half Triathlon on June seventeenth. It's a motion to approve.
Second.
Looks like we got a police dispatcher resignation.
I talked with the police chief today. We're also facing the possibility of other resignations or transfers. He's talking to some of the other chiefs in the area to see if it's epidemic in the area or just with us or with the profession. It's, that's why you see a lot of places that are going regional.
Correct. Very good. There's a motion to accept with regret and place on file.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
There's a request to work per diem. I'm assuming that's just kind of part-time, Mr. Kelly?
Correct.
So I mean, so we don't put the chief in any kind of stress if we could have, you know, work per diem. It is a request, so make a motion to accept, request to work per diem.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Next item is for a call for town meeting for May twenty-second, 2023 at seven PM.
You can see the town meeting checklist included in. It includes the various advertising dates. It includes when we would be getting stuff from the department heads for the board to consider.
Okay. So we've talked to like Pam and Mr. Dakin also. There's a motion to...
Yes, the moderator's been...
When was last year's town meeting?
The week before the election.
No, it was always a week after. But they changed, didn't they change that?
It's now the week before the election. It used to be, the election was in April, town meeting was in May.
And then they changed some board, some kind of agreement to not do the election until after the town meeting.
Yeah, that's right. That's what it was last year.
And this is changing it a week before?
Unless they're going to push the election until after.
What is the election? Yeah, but that's already crazy, dude. We're already, we, so the town charter, we need to discuss that, right?
I believe this is after a town election.
After town election.
So, so it's opposite. So it is, but anyways. The town charter says that town elections should be held on April first, the first Monday of April, I think it says, right?
It was changed.
And we've kind of kicked that around. Is that something that we need to look at and change again? Or can we just keep every year, just making it a change? Because it is the charter. It's almost like a bylaw. You can't waive the charter.
We're...
But we waived it for years.
We should probably address that when, in one of the next meetings, when the town clerk comes in with her election budget and everything else. You can address the town election. Because I know it's in the charter, but I also know we've had in the last four or five years, and I'm not up to date as the town clerk should be, but we've had multiple... should be, but we've had multiple, uh, changes coming from the state level during COVID and everything.
Yeah, I'm just, and, and I, look, I, I think it should be, wherever, wherever April, the first Monday in April, right, if you're, if you're a candidate, no matter what board, it's kind of hard to campaign, it's really crappy, you've been through it, what I've been through it, is it's, it's cold, it's raining, I mean, you get it out of, you know, the first Monday in April or whatever, on May or whatever it is, right, April, May, do something like that, I, I, I get it, but in we push town meeting out just to try to get more info from the, you know, the, from the legislative point of view for Chapter Seventy and things of the like, right? To get as much information we can to prepare for a budget season, so I, I kind of get that, but, you know, we're almost into June, and, you know, what's, we just kind of, and the, and the other thing, I think that, I don't know how my colleagues feel about this, but I've heard a lot, um, about Saturday elections. A lot of people don't like the weekend gig.
That would be between this board and the town clerk.
I know, I'm just throwing it out now that we're talking about the schedule right here, and it involves, you know, town meeting and things of the like, and I think it's something that, you know, a lot, a lot of people, look, I mean, you can just look at the numbers, right, and, and activities down on Saturdays, and a lot of people are just breaking out and taking off.
Spoiler alert, if it's a nice day in May, people aren't going to vote.
Correct.
They're going to baseball games, they're going to soccer games.
Camping, whatever it may be. I know.
We should definitely look into it.
You know, so I think, I'm just saying it now while we're discussing this, the warrant thing is, I think we need to have a bigger discussion and maybe reshuffle the deck, we always did elections on Mondays, right, Mondays?
I think it was either Monday or Tuesday.
No, we were Mondays, everybody else seemed to be Tuesday, that's why everybody got screwed up about us, so maybe we go like everybody else is Tuesday, I don't know, we should have that conversation and not be so different?
Yeah.
Because even people, when we had Monday elections, they're like, oh, I thought it was tomorrow, like, it's been Monday forever, but people are just getting screwed up, and I know a lot of people just hate Saturdays, uh, participation's been down, not up.
People don't mind leaving work to vote, they don't want to leave the games.
Yeah, right, exactly.
And with early voting and a number of elections, people aren't even coming out on Election Day.
I, I know, I, I.
I'm a traditionalist, it should be what, how, when the town was founded, it's the first Monday or whatever, the first in April, and then you have town meeting after that. The notion that a candidate can't figure out town meeting in a month.
Yeah, right.
To be honest with you, if they can't do that, then they shouldn't be running for office, okay? That's my feeling.
I agree with that.
Should we set this?
One of the reasons for, uh, this being, uh, a little later in May, uh, is because the town, the state budget was pushed from January to March one, that gives us a little bit of time to do all the publications we need if we have to rework the whole budget.
Well, hopefully, like Solomon Monah said, with the, with the one percent tax, right? That maybe the state will kick out some, some increased fund into our, especially our vocational schools, maybe they've been shortchanged for a long, long time.
Hope springs eternal, right?
Alright, so is a motion to set town meeting from May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three at seven P M.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay, so now we've got to go into executive session, I do have one announce, gentlemen, any selectmen's announcements?
I will have one, but you can.
No, you go.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I just wanted to let the public know, um, there's a young boy in our town, um, named Porter Gilmet, who was diagnosed with a fairly aggressive brain cancer, um, his mother's actually on our library board of trustees, and his father is a firefighter in New Bedford, um, very, very nice people, um, they are doing a fundraiser, um, a lot of residents in town put this together called Pizza for Porter, it's going to be at the V F W in town on March fourth, which is a Saturday from two to six P M, um, they're going to have raffles, games, uh, plenty of pizza, which is Porter's favorite food, and uh, if anybody can make it, it'd be worthwhile, uh, so we can take care of one of our own.
Very good. Alright. Happy birthday tomorrow.
Very good, and happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Alright.
Twenty-one's a great year. Next week, just FYI, next week on the fifteenth, uh, I'll be, uh, for the New Bedford City Council Committee on Property, um, to talk about Lake Street, um, and I've been assured by City Council President Linda Morad that that'll be kicked out of committee, and then the council agenda, the full council agenda at the end of February, so hopefully we should have some resolution and approval there, and we can now finally get that project actually moving in the right direction, so thank you, uh, Madam President, Linda Morad, for moving that along, and Councilor Giesta, who is the, uh, Chair of the, the City Committee on Properties, so. That's all I got. Alright, executive session, executive session under General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one A three, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, executive assistant if an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, as the chair so declares, and the board will not return to public session. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Gaspar?
Yes.
Mr. Hinkley?
Yes.
I mean, yes, we are now in the executive session.